This time, we'd like to take a moment of silence. And as we take a moment of silence this evening, we would like to remember those who are serving to protect this great nation, those in our military. We would also ask you to remember our first responders, our police, our fire department, and those who serve and protect and look in our behalf here in our communities. Also ask you to remember the city council this evening as they make decisions. They might make those decisions that are in the best interest of our city and those who are here. Now, take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Now, I have a period of time for public comment. This is a period of time that the public's welcome to come forward to the microphone and express any concerns or present any ideas they might have to the city council. We asked if you would keep your time to about three minutes. When you come to the microphone, state your name, and the time is yours for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. First, the mayor's report. I've got just two or three things. First of all, last Friday, we had a ribbon cutting for Ameri Carpets. It's over behind, at Home Is, where the old Walmart was, at Home Decor, and also the new Lazy Boy Furnish. They're in that plaza right behind there. They've been open for a period of time, but they had asked to have a ribbon cutting, and we were there, and they had some really good food. They had sweet potato burritos for everybody. This is owned by the Buckway family. They had a business here, carpet business, for about 20 years that was out here in the Crabtree Development, just out here by Riverdale Road, just north of us. And they've been open, I think, close to a year, and yet they still wanted to do this. But they said they're doing really well. Business is going really good for them, and they're just happy to be here. Ribbon cutting went well. I just thought I'd mention that. This Thursday, day after tomorrow, we have a tech committee meeting, be held at the community center. Was it 10 o'clock? It seemed like 10 o'clock. And that tech committee is looking to extend the West Bench RDA about five years or so. So that'll take place. We've got members coming from the county. I think there's one, obviously, from the state school board, I believe. But that meeting will be there. That'll be the first step. It looks like one of probably two meetings to present that, then have them come back and make a decision on what we're requesting to extend the time on that, about five years. Memorial Day service this Monday here at the Veterans Memorial. That'll be at 9:00 a.m. It won't be a long ceremony, but we'll be here and have a flag raising ceremony. We'll also put a wreath on the memorial in behalf of those who have served and lost their lives defending our freedoms. Move on next to the city administration report. Turn time to our city administrator, Mr. Worthing.
Thank you, Mayor Searle. Council, before you use our report for the month of April, I'd like to point out the department reports are in your packet. I would also like to make note of a couple departments, namely the Business Administration Department, Cody's work on our tentative budget and the great effort that he's put forth in that. He's not with us tonight. I also like to recognize the man to my right. He's on our employee recognition tonight with 28 years of service, Sean Douglas and his crew. As you know, we're gearing up for the busy part of the year, and we're there just running all over the place trying to take care of our streets, our water, our parks, and everything else in between. And I appreciate Sean and his staff for the work that they do, whether it's a waterline break or a simple project in the city where we're replacing a piece of curb or sidewalk. They're involved, and they do a great job in getting that taken care of and keeping our community in a good state of repair and maintenance. And I appreciate Sean and his staff in that effort. I would also like to make note, we're down 2.25, two and a quarter FTE, from what is authorized for us, staffing under our authorization plan. Also, the information for you for our finance report is in your packet as well. I'm going to go through the employee recognitions here in a second, but before I do, I'd also make note of the community development project, the status report that's provided to you by Mr. Aggett. Also in our report, the mayor mentioned Ameri Carpets held their ribbon cutting ceremony here just recently on the 17th, which was nice. Ongoing developments is Crumble Cookie. I know some of you are aware of Crumble Cookie.
Oh, yes.
We're looking forward to that one, opening their store in the town square, Riverdale Town Square, just to the north of the Hobby Lobby store there. So we're excited for them. Hopefully, they'll be done by June. We hope to be.
Did Mike say June 2nd this morning? You're shooting for that?
They're close. Near them, in a similar leased space there is a waxing salon called the Lunchbox Wax, which will open there in the Riverdale Town Square. Best Realty is still ongoing. Quick Quack Car Wash has their permit, but I think they're waiting for a contractor to finish a quick crack project up in Brigham City before they come down this way. And then, of course, Dania Furniture is also on that, which will hopefully open a store fairly soon over on 40, about 40th South on Riverdale Road. I'd like to...
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Bart.
With ShopCo closing, is there any talk about that? Or can you say?
None as yet. That's a store that's leased. That's a leased site. We haven't received any word from the company that actually owns the property at this point, but they're aware of the closing. It's prime property. I'm sure it will not stay vacant for very long at all. If I remember right, their last day was last week, if I remember right.
We could go less than.
Yeah. Council, our employee recognition for our May anniversaries, of course, I mentioned Sean with 28 years here. We have Bonnie Jones, who works with our police and as our animal control officer, has 21 years of service. Abe Torres has 13. That just surprises me. That picture there looks like he's in the eighth grade, but just recently married Abe, did, and he and his bride, and congratulations to him on that, but he has 13 years in our Public Works. Travis Gibson in our Public Works has eight years. Jake Peterson is on our five-year anniversary, and he's not here tonight. We have a certificate for him. He works in our Public Works, has five years of service. Luigi Panunzio in our police department has three years, and Luigi is the greatest cornhole player that you'll ever meet. The man is unbelievable. He won our cornhole tournament, by the way. We're going to do that again, see if we can dethrone him. Michael Preiter in our fire department has two years of service. Lance Beach in our fire department also has two years of service for our May anniversaries. Mayor, council, that's my report, if you have any questions of me.
Mr. Ellis?
In the paper, they said there was a Chinese restaurant or Asian restaurant that was...
Yeah, word gets out quick.
A big article in the paper about...
Yeah, I think they perhaps pulled that off, some information from the owner of the property, but yes, that's being considered for a develop, or at least tenant finish over by the Hobby Lobby in that area.
Sounds good.
Zous, Zous Asian Food. I think Mike Aggett got a call too from them regarding signs, so it looks like it's probably... I think it's going in over, what was the next, was it next to Jersey Mike's?
Yeah, the eyeglass place there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the eyeglass place gone?
No. No, it's there. It's actually one building west, west of the eyeglass thing, right on the corner. I looked on that Riverdale Town Square website, and it does show that on there, that Zous is being there. Mike Aggett says that's a pretty good place to eat, so I'll have something to try there. And you mentioned Officer Panunzio. He's the only officer we got that can do a standing backflip, and he does that at the school each year. At the end of the school year, he wears his, probably gym clothes and that. Okay, moving on to consent items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from our May 7, 2019 city council work session and also our city council regular session. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent items?
Motion to approve consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Move on next to our action items. Number one, consideration of resolution 2019-10, the annual municipal wastewater report. Mr. Douglas, our public works director.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just our annual report that we do every year for you. We mentioned before, but we didn't have any significant backflows or any backflows or any back siphonage in any homes this year on our system, and the rest of the report looked really well. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions? Do we have a motion, Mr. Arnold?
I move to approve resolution 2019-10, the annual municipal wastewater report is stated within the packet.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Manning, will you poll the council on the resolution, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on to action item two. This is consideration to approve the final site plan and amended subdivision slash condominium plat for Riverdale Business Park Phase Two. This is located approximately 5187 South, 1500 West in Riverdale, and it's represented by Mike Ford. Do you want to say anything first, or should we just have Mike come up?
Mike's here. Appreciate you being here today, Mike. Mike's been working through with the staff and with the planning commission council and presenting to you tonight an application for approval of the Riverdale Business Park Phase Two, the site plan and amended condominium subdivision proposal as part of the motion on 2A. The staff recommends approval. As the mayor mentioned, it sits on about .80 acres, roughly at 5180 South, 1500 West here in our community. And some of you are familiar with the Phase One that sits there on about 1500, or excuse me, 5100 South. Mike was the developer on that project as well, which is a very nice feature for that area. Brings a lot of jobs to our community, and I would foresee this being something very similar. So if you have any particular questions for myself or Mike, we can hopefully answer them.
Anything, Mr. Stevens? You look like...
Yeah, there was a question that was brought up by the planning commission about tenants or potential tenants, and at the time, there was, I think it read that you were in discussions. Do you have tenants or the types of businesses that you have going in there?
I'm Mike Ford. I reside at 2049 South, 1230 West in Syracuse. The tenants that we have under contract, New City HVAC, they're currently on the other side of the street. They're just moving over, taking two spaces. There's IFIX Appliance Repair. They repair appliances along with their name. And then there's a low voltage subcontractor that does like audio video wiring for new homes and security cameras. Those are kind of the tenants that we have right now, and there's one more space that we have available.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
This operates on an HOA kind of thing, right?
Correct, similar to an HOA.
And one of the things is no overnight parking?
Mm-hmm.
And that heating and air conditioning business is constantly leaving their cars and vans there overnight? So who enforces this?
So the president or the manager of the HOA or unit owners association?
So nobody?
Enforce that.
Maybe it's CHVAC guy.
Right now, I would be the manager of the new one, the one across the street. They have their own association and president in place. So that's more to keep the, I think, parking stalls available in front of the roll-up doors so the owners can access those if they need to 24/7.
But shouldn't it say that in the HOA kind of thing, as if that's what they're trying to accomplish, as opposed to no overnight parking?
It does say that they're not supposed to block any of the roll-up doors.
But it also says no overnight parking.
Correct.
But they don't follow it.
It'd be up to the association president of the current one.
You're the developer that puts the HOA in, that comes up with these rules, and then you turn it over to somebody to manage it, and they're not managing it. So you're trying to do another one that's not being managed, or could possibly not be managed.
I can speak on the future one that we're doing, not on the past one.
Right, but you know, the thing that I'm concerned with is developers that come in and do a development, and then they turn it over and they leave, and they put it together with the greatest intentions, but then they don't follow up with their agreements, or I mean, they just hit, make their money, and leave the community.
I'm right there next door at Bravo Arts Academy. I own that, and so I mean, I'm not, I'm not leaving. I'm there.
Well...
I want it to be managed so the owners can run their businesses.
Is there, is there a problem, Allen, with where they're parking?
Well, it's just the HOA, it functions on an HOA, and the HOA says there's, one of the, one of the main concerns was having like a auto mechanic repair shop and having non-running vehicles. But what they said was that there was not, not going to be any overnight parking with this business or these businesses. And the only way that can happen is if it's enforced, and it's not the city's job to enforce it, it's the HOA companies to enforce it. So the developer comes in, they build them, they put the HOAs in, and then they give... It's like a condominium company. They do an HOA, and then they, they don't enforce their ordinances or their, their own ordinances that they have.
Does it specify if it's overnight parking by an owner or...
Nope, says overnight parking. No overnight parking.
I wonder if that ought to be clarified somehow to what it really means, because wouldn't, if somebody had a HVAC shop and they had a service vehicle, should they not be allowed to have that kept overnight there? I don't know. I can see, I see where Allen's coming from with extra vehicles and that.
Part of what they were saying in the original agreement was that they were going, any of that type of stuff would be parked indoors and at the businesses.
I think that's what we were trying to do, is trying to keep a clean look. We didn't want trailer, trailers left over indefinitely. Yeah, we could definitely try to clarify that where it's their service vehicles, no trailers.
And maybe there shouldn't be if you're trying to keep a clean look. I don't know. That was just a thought. Mr. Mitchell?
So, do, do you allow automotive repair shops? Like, is that an allowed...
It'd be according to the city's own zoning. On the development agreement, and I don't have that with me, there's a list of uses.
Is this the same agreement we're going to do use tonight?
It's the same agreement with the used in the past, correct, for Phase One, and those allowed uses were taken pretty much straight from the allowed uses in that zone.
Okay.
From the city code.
Did it show?
There's an automobile parts sales.
But no repairs.
Not an automobile repair. I understand what Mr. Arnold's saying, like, you know, we don't want a bunch of broken down cars parked out in front.
Well, and I would get that as well, if that's what it said.
Yeah.
But there's no overnight parking, and you know, it's just, and I'm a little development shy right now, just because of what's going on in our neighborhood, but the, you know, if it says it's something and the developer's coming in saying, hey, I want Phase Two, and Phase One isn't doing what they said they were going to do, why do we think that Phase Two is going to do what they're going to do? I mean, I see it as a development. We're going to build it and move away. Not move away, because you're right next door, but that means you're right around the corner watching what I watch every day as well, so.
So I had a question. So if these are all sold off and an HOA takes over, who, who keeps the developer's agreement? Is it the HOA or...
The HOA would.
And who is, who is the president? Who's the manager of that?
Once we build them and sell them, then we'd have to go through an election, and one of the owners would be elected to be president.
Because we don't really have an agreement with the HOA, right? It's with the developer, and so does it just void?
That goes with the title. It's recorded on the condominium plat.
Once the developing agreements, once we approve it, then it's up to them to enforce it or to live by it, because we can't go in and say, well, you did this with the city, and you're going to live by your agreements. They just do what they want to do, and nobody's enforcing the one that we already approved.
So how does that work, Roger? Just go to enforcement, go in and because of...
It'd be a violation.
...with their development agreement? Do we, do they get cited? Do we just bring them to court or...
They, potentially, they could.
What's the right way? I mean, first thing you should do is warn them and talk to them, I'm sure, but I just wondered who actually enforces that. How do we, how do we go about that?
It would be through our community development department. Ultimately, you want compliance with the development agreement, right? So like you indicated, you'd reach out to them and say, hey, we noticed that you're leaving vehicles there overnight, parking outside. Per your development agreement, they should be parked indoors. If we still continue to see violations, then ultimately, yeah, you would bring in a citation to them.
I think, can you maybe make a note of that and have them...
Certainly.
Have them take a look at that, and then if there's a problem, if the association doesn't feel like there's a need, then they ought to come in and try to have that amended where it doesn't say no vehicles left overnight outside.
Yeah, either a citation, or ultimately, it could result in the removal of their business licensure if you come down to it. If you have a business that's not complying with the development agreement and they're parking out there, then obviously, they're not conforming to the business licensure and the agreement that goes with it. So ultimately, it could come to that, which would come to this body.
When the business is moving over there, it actually has enough business, or cars left overnight that it spills over onto the street as well.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed.
Which that's actually legal, because...
It's a public right of way.
Parking on the street, yeah.
It's, it comes down to an enforcement issue, and obviously, on the part of the applicant to make that consideration and apply by the, by the agreement that's, that's agreed to. But ultimately, it comes down to an enforcement issue of the use.
Does the city keep a record of who the manager of the HOA is? Point of contact kind of thing?
No, but that's not hard to discover and find out who that is.
Okay.
And did you say you're on the, the north as well of Bravo, the red buildings?
No, that's a different owner.
Oh, okay.
So just Bravo Arts Academy.
Yeah.
That's the one I own.
Oh, you do own that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Ellis?
That's a busy area. Are there any plans to limit off, on-street parking or people parking there overnight or with, with all the businesses that are going on and going up that hill? I worry about line of sight and, you know, when the Coleman Farms sells all their homes, it's going to be kind of crowded. What are your anticipations with on-street parking with this particular development?
As far as the design of the, the site, it meets the city code for parking per so many thousand square feet of space. I mean, we encourage people to park in their, in their warehouse and not in the parking lot or on the street. There's, as far as enforcing that, I guess we could enforce the HOA or the development agreement, but as far as on-street parking, as far as I know, that's allowed on that area.
Also in there, it talks about a gymnasium, a possible use for a gymnasium. I don't see those units being big enough for, you know, that...
And we just went through the list of the allowed uses in the city, from the city code.
So that isn't one of your plans to put in?
Right now, it's not one of the buyers, no.
Okay.
What's the, what's the parking code for a gymnasium if they said there's more parking needed for a gymnasium?
Off the top of my head, Allen, I don't have that on my mind. I'd have to look that up, but I...
And that would, that would change, I think, with the occupancy, and so I doubt Mr. Aggett would approve a gymnasium.
For the record, didn't Mr. Aggett...
He brought this to my attention, yeah.
So he, he thought there was not enough parking for a gymnasium.
I would agree with that.
Which is in the agreement, which in order for us to approve this, we would have to...
You would remove that one.
Wouldn't that be in the development?
But we would have to remove it from the code. We couldn't, we'd just remove it from the developer's agreement. We'd have to move, remove it from the...
The actual code for the CPU, yeah, because it's an allowed use.
For the zoning.
It's an, we can't change it.
We can't just remove it from the builder's agreement.
Or change the title.
Correct. I think a gymnasium would tend to, as I think you are all intimating, that it would garner more, more parking requirements than what would be there for that space.
If someone tries to fit a gymnasium in what he has left, more power to him.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I just don't think you have the room in the, in the building for a gymnasium, to be honest with you.
Mr. Hanson?
Can I make a motion to approve the final site plan and amended subdivision condominium plat for Riverdale Business Park Phase Two, 5187 South, 1500 West?
As written.
As written, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Arnold?
I would say that based on Mr. Aggett's information that he left with Mr. Worthing, that this would be inappropriate to pass this today.
You say it wouldn't be appropriate to pass it?
I don't think it would be appropriate. We would be, if, if Mr. Aggett knows something about the gymnasium parking, that he's left it with Mr. Worthing, Worthing to communicate that to us, then, and we pass it with the gymnasium, that he asked, actually asked for this to be removed from the developer's agreement, but we can't remove it from the developer's agreement. We'd have to remove it from the city code for this zoning. I think it would have been inappropriate to move forward with this.
He, Mr. Aggett didn't decide, didn't say remove it. It is a concern in the future if it was to be brought forth as a use. He didn't request that we remove it, other than he said it is a concern. If that use was to come in, I think we would have to address that parking as part of the licensure for the business. But I think Councilmember Hanson is correct. It is in the, it is in the code. If it was to be removed, then obviously, we'd have to amend the code.
Or amend the parking.
Yeah, but that particular use could occur in any type of CPU or CP3 zone, obviously, if we had the space for it. I think as part of the review of the business licensure, then we would look at that particular issue and administratively say, no, we can't issue a license for this type of use, because there's just no room there.
So we have control.
Correct.
I had a question. Doesn't the development agreement give us the opportunity to, to limit? I mean, what, what would be in there or...
It is, but we, we took the uses right from the CP3 zone, put in the development agreement.
I had a question, doesn't the development agreement give us the opportunity to, to limit? I mean, what, what would be in there, or?
It is, but we, we took the uses right from the CP three zone, put in the development agreement, so I can see that kind of conflicting.
But if we took it out of the development agreement, it would just be not in the agreement, you can't put it in it.
Developers agreement, he, he's, he's just building the shell of a building, and the parking, and then when somebody buys that particular condo unit, then they would go in and create it, so it would be their problem. So the developer's agreement is just gonna build the building and move away, and not deal with any of the issues they're, they're causing.
This mo-, this motion was for the site plan, not for the developer's agreement.
Right.
That's correct.
Can we vote?
Okay, uh, have a motion, second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Have one opposed, okay, motion passes. Okay, let's move on to, uh, item B, this is consideration to approve the development agreement to the Riverdale Business Park Phase Two. Any further comment, Mr., uh, Worthen?
No, in, in, in consideration of what Councilmember Mitchell said, I think you could pull the gymnasium use from the development agreement, and then move forward, I really do, because it's individual to that particular development.
Yeah. Or we mentioned upstairs, you could change it, because doesn't Nate Toll still have his fitness thing over there?
By, as far as I know, Nate Toll does.
Yeah, I think you'd have to have something in there that would cover his.
But as far as this.
Mr. Hanson?
Question for you, if in the developer's agreement, we said we would like to strike the use of a gymnasium, but add fitness, um, like whatever, you know, you would refer to what his business is, would you be agreeable to that?
Yeah, and this development agreement is separate from phase one, so we could just, we could just.
Yeah, but you need something else in there to cover.
No, we just, we didn't scratch it out.
Oh, that's for the, yeah, this is.
That's just for this, this side.
That's true.
Well, it's working well on phase one, so. Strike away. Oh, for the record, that was being facetious.
What's the difference between facetious and sarcastic? Because that sounded more sarcastic.
And what's the difference?
That's what I asked.
Mr. Hanson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the development agreement for the Riverdale Business Park Phase Two, with the inclusion of striking the usage of a gymnasium as a possible use.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we got, uh, four in favor, one opposed. Motion passes, motion carries. Any discretionary items for this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Ford.
I, I have one. The, um, I was approached by a resident about the sound wall again, up on the ridge, by the ridge. Um, I mean, I basically explained it's by the noise ordinance, and it's an on-ramp versus an off-ramp, which the off-ramp usually gets more noise, just because of the breaks. Just up on the top, that development community at the top of the hill.
North, north of Diamond, north of Diamond Hills.
Only hides teams.
So anyway, um, they asked if I would just bring it up to see if we could make a call to UDOT and.
Requesting additional expansion or enlargement?
There, there isn't one.
No, they'd have to do a study, I'm sure, to.
Yeah, we, I, I remember talking, um, we had discussed this years ago.
I know.
Study, so.
If Mike goes back through, um, Randy Daly's information, I know Randy approached him about that in the past, and I can't remember all the reasonings, but we have discussed it with him for sure.
Yeah.
But I'm sure Randy probably has some notes in there with it, I can't remember all the reasonings and the counts or what they had, but it was discussed.
One of, one of the things that they had talked about, I think they've had, what they mentioned was like two fires up there, from people throwing cigarettes out the, the windows or their windows of the car, or something like that, that, just in the vegetation right there. So, I mean, they had just mentioned that with the noise and, and the fire hazard, because there, there's a lot of vegetation along the, the on-ramp and then right to their homes, so. They were, they were using, they were using about every reason they could come up with, so.
I know the previous study, they came up with, uh, the sound level wasn't high enough to warrant the, the sound wall, and I did have a lady call me, and she was very concerned about the need of having a sound wall there, and she mentioned how her cat had got out onto the freeway and succumbed to injuries.
Kitty fence, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I did explain it, because I, I think I remember that when they did the, the stack, or did some sound studies over there. And with it being an on-ramp, you know, you don't have the jake brakes and stuff like that that really causes the noise, you know, even though they're ramping up, they're still not hitting the decibels that they were worried about, so I don't know if there's, that's when they pulled the fire button, fire alarm.
Actually, the, the, the brakes, uh, air brakes do go off, because when they merge, surprisingly, because it goes from three lanes to two lanes to, or one, in that.
Yes.
There, there, there is a jockeying, and so they do get the air.
They actually use them, huh?
Yeah, occasionally, but not as much as the off-ramp. Because I, when I was up there, I, since I lived by there, I happened to hear the same things from probably the same residents, and we sat there for about a half hour on the porch and just, just observed, and you, you, you get it.
I think it was, I think, like a million dollars a mile, or. Something like that, so it wasn't exactly something they were diving at, you know.
And that was, that was a long time ago, that's back when we first, what, ten years ago or so?
Yeah.
Ten, twelve years ago, they'd done that study, so it's probably, probably doubled that now.
So I just, and I, I also explained, you know, Riverdale City calling UDOT, you know, people take the paper and go, we can't hear you.
They're pretty good to talk to right now, it has been for some time, yeah, they, they really. We did, we did have a meeting, uh, just for your information, uh, uh, you know, we've always talked about South Weber Drive trying to have bike lanes or have that wider for pedestrians, but it's never been practical or possible, uh, just because of the cost, it was prohibitive, that's what we were told, and one guy that lived in South Weber that worked for UDOT suggested putting, uh, I think I've mentioned this before, but putting a trail out along on the south side of I eighty-four, you can buy there right away, lease it for like a dollar a year, he said, you could lease right away and put a trail, but we looked at that, and there just isn't, there just isn't connectivity for the people that live on South Weber Drive to get out to that trail, because they don't own the property where they could get out there. So we had a meeting, I mentioned this, and I was in a meeting in Salt Lake, and I mentioned this to the mayor of South Weber, and, uh, just see what her thoughts, because I know she's pretty big on pedestrians and bikes and stuff. And so anyway, we had a meeting with, uh, UDOT, and, uh, we had people from both cities there, Roger was there, Sean was there. And it turned out to be a real good meeting, and, uh, they actually, UDOT actually, uh, didn't really want a discount, that they couldn't get at least one bike lane along there that people use for pedestrians, and so there, that, that's, this is gonna go forward somewhat, with, you know, with the next cycle, we're gonna put in a request to look at possibly doing some widening on that road, and try to make it better for active transportation. And I was in a meeting last week at Wasatch Front Regional Council, and the Regional Growth Committee, and this subject come up, and they said in that meeting that there's actually more funds now available, the funds were easier to get for active transportation, and, uh, looked like there's more chance of getting funding, and, and UDOT, this, uh, new gal that took Chris Peterson's places at Lisa Wilson, is that her name? She, uh, yeah, they were, they, they were, they were pretty much, they, they thought it was good to go forward to this and try to do a widening on, on, uh, South Weber Drive, so. Which kind of surprised us, because it was like before, you can't do that, it's too much money, but they thought they could squeeze and widen that some, somewhat.
They should have done that when they were doing the, that piping project.
Yeah. That would have made too much sense, or they're gonna repave it, aren't they?
Oh, before they widen it.
But I don't think there's no way they'll get the widening portion done, because the project's already bid out, it's scheduled, so I don't see any widening with that, and it's a resurface project, it doesn't have a whole lot of improvements with it. But it will impact South Weber Drive for probably three months this summer.
Any other discretionary, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, one other thing with UDOT is we had talked about, uh, maybe trying to make some adjustments at nine hundred west, make it so they couldn't cross on the, the kind of the west side, taking that crosswalk out, and then, I don't know, I don't know if there's any possibility, but the Walmart property sticks out into nine hundred west, if we could just shave that little bump off, it would, it would open that road wide open, but we, but at least the crosswalk on that side.
That's gonna go.
Is it gonna go?
They told us that would happen with painting season.
Okay, okay.
So unless they back out on us, that was the last word we had on that, was that crosswalk would be removed. And I actually have a bid on that shaving that you were just talking about.
Wow, alright.
So there is an issue with that. Um, storm drain.
Okay.
I, right now, I don't have enough drainage to get the water to run, because when you move that back, you actually add footage. So you already have a set grade there, so the issue is now is making the storm drainage work. And if we can make the storm drainage work, then that could possibly be a project for this summer, even if we can make that storm drainage work.
Is there any RDA money left for that area?
Yeah, we have a little on Riverdale Road we perhaps could use in that, a little enhancement work right through there.
We, we have money to fund it, if we can make the storm drainage work, and you guys are agreeable to doing it, I have a price already packed from a contractor. Um, and it would move that lane to give us four lanes through there. So you would have.
I usually agree to almost everything, so.
I don't, I don't believe that after tonight. But yeah, I think it would, it, it's not gonna be a fix, don't get me wrong, it's not a total fix. But if you stand over there and watch how many people jump that curb and spark off of it, you know, at twenty miles an hour, it's like, just wait a second, it's dangerous to stand there for a minute, because they're bouncing over the curb, but. It would be, uh, some, it would have leave some of the problem, and then, you know, going forward somewhere down the road, we'll have to widen that, if you want it perfect, it'd have to be, you know, three lanes at least.
Yeah.
But we can, we've looked at, we've got a restriping plan, and then we will have the, supposedly, UDOT will do the crosswalk, which will give us added time on the light, which will help on that left turn.
Yeah.
So if we can make all that work this summer, then maybe by, you know, our Thanksgiving season, that always gives us a problem over there, maybe we could have a few things in place to fix some of that.
Perfect.
We, we've been working on this since, I think, when you brought that up, Brad, back in, what, October, November?
Yeah, and I, I knew it had to wait a little bit for the, you know, to get through the winter, but if there's new people at UDOT or whatever, it might be just worth a reminder, like, hey.
We've, we've talked. Winter, so it's just, it's paint, you know, it's just getting the paint crews out there and doing the changes on the lights and taking the crosswalk out, and.
That's awesome.
They told us it will happen this paint season, is what they've told us, now I can't hold them to that, but that's what they've said, so.
There, there's a lot of variables in it, not only the crosswalk that we're talking about, but also the, the shaving of that little bubble or curb out there by the Walmart, where Maverick and Walmart can join there. Um, we've got that turn into the new Maverick store, people commonly make that left turn. And, and I've seen people actually just stop and wait right there, and just back traffic up around the corner, onto Riverdale Road. So there's some things we're looking at there with, with, uh, putting a sign back a little bit further, um, to the north. The change that Sean mentioned that he's got a bid on, I reviewed that bid, and it's, what, thirty-something thousand, I think, to do it all, so. And, and most of that is Prop One. I, I think by the time we can answer some of the issues with engineering, we've got, um, some easement work perhaps, we gotta look at as well. Move a tree, we're gonna lose a tree, maybe, and maybe the, the scary part is moving utilities, if we have to move utilities in it.
You know, perhaps, uh, once you shave it, put in some, you know, prickly bushes, pyracantha, so that no one will be standing there with their signs.
Update on, on the bus stop, we did reach out to UTA again, and basically said, look, this is entering into an issue of condemnation if you can't get property, they said, well, let us go see if we have at least two feet there, which we received word back last Friday that they don't at both sites, so, um, in that same email response back from the gentleman from UTA says, we have reached out to the landowner, um, made formal application to them to obtain a, an easement for some property, and we have not heard back from them, which we knew would happen. Um, I also reached out with a phone call to one of the owners, or the members of the family that own the property, reached out with a phone call to him. Um, he hadn't heard word from UTA at that point, but it wasn't the, the proper conversation, uh, time or um, place to talk to him about it, um. UTA did confirm, though, that they had reached out to the family and waiting a response, if that doesn't get a response, then at that point, we will move to a more difficult position, and I think you know what that means, so.
And I, I get why they were opposed to it when the previous business was there, but I don't understand it now.
Uh, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
It, it seems like it would clean it up, because once they put the trash cans in there, and then they service them.
Yeah.
Which, I.
We did confirm that there's no space there, period, so at, at this point, it would have.
A hundred percent on the family.
Go ahead, Mr.
Uh, this is the last week of, of public schools, where at least Weber County, and with the Riverdale School can draw to conclusion, some requests were put into Sean and his group to, you know, do some things for, for the park, which he readily did on short notice, and it's, and it's acknowledged and appreciated. So that, uh, the planned outside activities, when that occurs this week, can, can go forward, but, uh, thanks, tip the hat to Public Works for, uh, stepping up to be, you know, with the park, uh, around the school and the playground, to make that a, a good event, as they conclude.
I'll tell the guys, they, they busted it yesterday trying to beat the rain for them, so. It's been hard to mow the lawns this year.
Yeah, well, it was acknowledged by more than just myself, that, and, and it was appreciated.
I wanted to thank Sean also and his crews for the, I think they do a great job striping our streets, I think you do it every year, don't you? Most of it's restripped and.
August every year.
Gee, I, I go in some, some other, some of them are kind of rural areas, but uh, they don't even have a stripe down the middle of the road, and you get in the rain at night or dark, and you, you don't even know where the road is, and, uh.
Went right over a raccoon behind Sam's Club.
He was still moving on, did that.
Anyway, it's, it's, it's really good, we appreciate what you do there, because I, I think our striping looks as good probably as any any city I go in, and, uh, it's really well kept, and, uh, I think, think that reflects on your, your crews and yourself and, uh, Riverdale City, just looks good, people, I'm sure people like that, like the striping and that, but it does look good, looks really good, any other discretionary?
Just, just have one question about Coleman Farms and their, uh, building the homes. So probably half are not sold, and they, they weren't supposed to build any like that.
Like already up, or the signs that say?
Yeah, no, they're, the ones that are up that say for sale.
Okay. As far as spec home?
I don't remember.
They said they weren't gonna do any spec homes or any homes like that, but, so they have the two homes that are the show homes that they've got on the corner, and then as you turn, there's one home that the family has purchased and moved in, then the next three are just built for sale, there's.
One of the garages said sold today, I just went drove by there.
Yeah, there's a total of, there's a total of twenty-four permits issued in there.
Okay.
But the goal would be to build a home and sell. But the goal would be to build a home and sell it. And I don't know if you can sell a home.
I think they were selling them to build, but if they've got twenty-four in there, then they're way above half.
Yeah, not all those are built. There's twenty-four permits issued. I don't know how many are actually built up there at this point.
Are they issuing them to Richmond American Homes or are they issuing them to?
Richmond America would be the builder.
Go through them to buy their
I didn't, I don't remember anything that was said that they couldn't build a home before it was sold.
That's why the spec homes
I know one of the homes, I know one of the homes on the north side had a buyer and then they backed out. I know that for a fact on one of those that are there. They were actually ready to close and then they found a different offer somewhere else and backed out of the offer after the home was actually built.
It could've been all three along there for, cause I don't know who picked that weird green. One of the ones that you're speaking of is one
That's ugly, you know?
It is.
Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're outta here. Thank you. Thanks for being here.